All right.
All right.
All right.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Okay, so before we start at the interviews at 4:10, just thought we should talk a little bit about process. We have the questions in front of us. And I think what we'll do is just go off start and we'll go around the table and each ask one. And then when we get to the end, if you have follow up questions, those would be the time to do that. Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Okay. And one thing that has changed that we learned by statement, the appointment becomes effective 30 days after the resolution is approved. So this new board member will be available for the December, not the November board meetings. So that was the change.
Okay. That actually jives pretty well because that gives them time to go through the there's an orientation that they have to go through and we have to complete a background check, I believe, too.
Yeah.
Are we not?
Mm-hmm.
That just means that we extend like I'm not on the operations temporarily until we get.
Right. Anyway, and I would like to wait until Superintendent Larson gets back here and we have a little bit of time. So any other questions or thoughts before? And again, we won't be able to decide tonight because we have one interview next week.
Is it a hard stop after a certain amount of time? Like if they with all the questions, if they don't get to all the questions, do you stop them so we don't?
Let's see, we have a half an hour per candidate. There's 10 questions, so that's three minutes and that doesn't allow any. I don't have a timer.
It's gonna be.
And we can watch it, but I feel like we need to let.
I feel like we would need to just.
I can let you know when 30 minutes is up if you want, I can do.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I think we need to get through all the questions for each of them.
I guess I'm fine with, for me, it's just whatever we decide.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I'd rather get to the questions if we can.
Yes, I would rather to, I, yeah.
I think we have to be respectful of people's schedules though, too.
Right, right.
I mean, when the candidate knows how many questions we have and how much time we have, I think they need to be concise in their answers.
Perhaps we could just advise each of the candidates to try to keep their answers to two, two and a half minutes.
There it is, if you.
Okay.
Gives us a little bit of time to follow up.
Yeah, I think they need to, I mean, I know it's tight, but I think you have to respect everyone's time schedule.
Unless somebody else.
So we went through the process and we're all ready if we want to call the, might as well get started a little early, yeah. Yep. Derek is here.
That makes sense. Um, one other just item, um, in terms of the actual process that we will go through once the interviews are completed, will we discuss that on next Wednesday or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So tonight, it's just the four. Welcome.
Hi.
We're gonna ask you the questions and then at the end, if there's times, we'll, we'll maybe have some follow up questions.
Madam Chair, would it be okay if we let the candidates take their masks off while they're doing their presentations?
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, that's a good idea. So welcome, Derek, and we'll, um, get started and let's see, does everyone have a list of the questions?
Yes.
So just first, just tell us about yourself and the qualities you could bring to.
Sure. So I am a graduate of Brainerd High School. I'm born and raised here in Brainerd, went to Central Lakes College, met my wife there. We went to Bemidji State together as well. She went into teaching, I went into mass comm and public relations. And we moved back here and currently she's a teacher at the Brainerd High School. And we have two children, Eli is a junior at the high school and Ruthie is in sixth grade at Forestview. So two, two students in the district. And I also coach in the district, ninth grade football and 10th grade baseball. And my wife is also a coach in the district as well. I've served on many boards to this point. And, um, you know, I think a lot of the qualities that I possess really come from some of that from my degree and why I went into public relations is I feel that, you know, for any job that we've ever had, we're always doing PR, I think, no matter where you go. Either it's for your company or for yourself, um, which you guys are doing. You're constantly in the community, you are PR for ISD 181. And I have a, I feel I have a lot of connections in our community, being a homegrown boy here. And I think those qualities would be beneficial to us, being an ear of the community and, you know, having a lot of connections that way. So enthusiasm, energetic team kind of guy, team is, is kind of my thing, you saw on the application. But it's important to me that, you know, we work as a team and have those team qualities to, to achieve goals.
Okay, next question. What are your top two reasons for wanting to be appointed to the Board of Education?
Uh, the first reason is to make a difference in the lives of our students. I fortunately get to do that as a coach and I love it, especially freshman football. These are ninth graders that are coming into their high school career and learning to be young adults, teaching them more than just the game and to be, you know, good human beings, be responsible, um, be accountable, teaching them all those things like that that I get to do on an athletic field and being on the board, I would get that opportunity to do academically, which I think is important as well. And I get to see that with my wife being a teacher. And I get to have those same students that are coming to the football field that talk about Mrs. Owen and that's great. I mean, I get to see the impact that she's having on students and I will be able to have that same impact then academically for them as well. Secondly, is that, you know, I really want to get us back to, I say get us back because as you know, times are very different right now. And I'm very proud to be a Brainerd graduate and I want people to graduate and have that same feeling. Right now, my son being a junior has gone through some turmoil, right, with the way things have gone here. You know, unforeseen things that you guys never thought you'd have dealt with. But, you know, my daughter being a sixth grader, I mean, I want to give them the best experience that they possibly can. And not just for my kids, but for all the students. That's really our goal is to make them proud of where they graduated from. I want them to be proud to be warriors and I want to have a part in that.
All right, next question. When it comes to the board level decision making process, what will your process be for gathering stakeholder input? And how are you prepared to support the mission of the district?
Well, more so the second part, I mean, the mission of the district is something that, that you guys are setting, right, that we have set forth. So we all need to be on board with that mission. I know that sometimes we don't agree with the direction or the way a mission might be going. But if that is what the board has set forth, then we need to be on board with that and we need to follow that mission. As far as the decision making, I think knowledge is key, right? Education is key. We should be educating ourselves as much as possible when it comes to decision making. If I make a decision on this board, I want to be able to answer to the community of why I made that decision, where that information came from, where I gathered my information. So I think, and you guys are doing that, I believe you are, you're, you're making the decisions the best of your ability with the information that you have in front of you. And so it's, it is, it's going out, it's talking to our community members, right? They're, they're very loud right now and we should be listening, right? So they have a lot to say. We should be listening to those community members, we should be doing our research, we should be gathering as much data as we can. And then after that, gather even more data, right? Because if we can back up why we're making the decisions we do, I think that's very important. So research and educating ourselves on all aspects of the decision that we are making is super important.
All right, thanks. Derek, what do you identify as the major strengths of Brainerd Public Schools?
This is an easy one for me. I think we have amazing, amazing teachers. I just think our staff that we have here is, is phenomenal. Some of those teachers are still here when I was in the district. And not only did they have an impact on my life here, they're now having that same impact on my kids. And of course, I think my wife is an amazing teacher and like you said, I get to hear that acknowledgement from, from her students. But we really have, we have the tools here to make it great. It's just fostering those tools, right, and giving those teachers the resources that they need. But I think we have a great staff. We have the pieces to the puzzle, if you will. It's just putting them all in the right place to get to where we want to go. So hands down, it's our, it's our staff at Brainerd High School, or ISD 181, I should say.
Next question. Explain your understanding of the responsibilities of a school board. What is an area in which the Board of Education can improve? Or how would you support the current board with this?
Charles, you've got the longest question, yeah. So my understanding of the school board is that, you know, we're here and set in place to set the, be the governing body of the school district, to set policies and procedures, to enforce those policies and procedures. Again, listening to our, to our community and doing the best that we can as far as putting forth the rules and regulations to, to provide the best possible education that we can for our students. One of the areas that I think that we can be doing better at is accountability. Accountability is big for me as far as all the way from the board member level, all the way down to our students and our families. If we're not held accountable for what we're doing, it's hard to, to be leaders that way, right? We should be leading by example. If we say we have open door policies, that door better not be shut. You know, those type of things, we need to be responsive, we need to be proactive rather than reactive at times. So I think we need to get out in front and be more communicative as much as we can. It's something that I, I think that we can improve upon. And then, of course, a way to do that is, I think it was similar to Director Boils when he ran as far as really getting out in the community and surrounding communities, talking to our schools. We should know the principals and the leaders of all our schools, the administrators, as many teachers as possible. I know that's not always, you're not going to know everyone in our district, but you should know of people and we should be out and visible. It's really important to me that, that, I think that's really a key factor in what we're doing here is that we need to be an outlet. That's why we're here, right? We're, we're here to provide the best possible education that we can for our students, to support our staff and our admin. And we can't do that with a closed door. So we need to be proactive, we need to be accessible, which is extremely important in my eyes.
Thank you.
Okay, what is your understanding of the opportunity gap between white, American, Indian students as well as other students of color?
My understanding is unfortunately there is a gap. I would like to think that there's not as soon as kids walk through that door. Doesn't matter their background, when they walk into one of our buildings, they should all have the same opportunity to learn. It just actually hit me the other evening, I'm at home helping my sixth grade daughter with her math, which if anybody's done sixth grade math, not the easiest thing to do. But I did come to the realization that, you know what, not everyone has that dinner table to sit around with and do homework with a parent or a guardian. So I realized that there's, there are gaps and that is a challenge because I feel like we can do the best that we can to shorten that gap within our schools. But what are ways we can shorten that gap outside of the school? You know, I, I, an example that we had for, let's take athletics with football, is that at Harrison School, only one football player in the high school program came from Harrison. And there's more football players than that, we know that, there's more athletes there. But how are they not, they're either not having the same opportunity to get involved, there's a gap, right? That's what we were talking about, there's gaps and we need to do our best to, to fill those gaps, to find out the problems, find out solutions. But again, I feel like when students walk through the door, doesn't matter what their race is, they should have the ability to have the same learning process as everyone else. Now, the gaps, like I said, outside of school, that's, that's challenging. And that's something that I think that we as a board need to do and work together to find out how we, how we shorten those gaps.
Thank you, Derek. Next question is, what is responsibility of the Board of Education in guiding efforts of equity and inclusion?
Yep, I think that almost piggybacks the question before as well. I mean, it's a huge responsibility for us as far as allowing people to have the equal opportunity to learn. Everyone should have, you know, when we walk into a classroom, we're all getting the same education, the same opportunity to learn. However, we have that realization that not everybody learns the same or at the same rate or same pace and that type of thing. So other resources should be allocated to students that aren't, you know, learning at the same pace. Now, I also think it's important that we don't neglect those who are. There's a good percentage of our district that we have great students, they're AP class students or that type of thing. We shouldn't take away from them and we should never make them feel less that we have to maybe allocate to another program. So those resources should be there. We need to provide resources to students who need it to get to the academic standards that we're setting forth. But we don't want to take away from another program or take away from anything else to do that. It should also, it should be in addition. So additional resources to provide, you know, equal opportunities, inclusion for people to learn.
All right, Derek, next question. Explain your understanding of the difference between governance and management. What is the role of the school board in regards to public education?
Sure, so governance definitely comes first. You know, we're setting, like I mentioned earlier, we're setting the rules and, and policies and procedures that are governing our school. So that's the governance components of what the board does. As far as management is concerned, that is setting up the enforcement of those, those policies and procedures that we created. That starts with setting the powers that we give to our superintendent, making sure that they're following through on their duties and responsibilities as far as their role within the school district. So again, it goes above and beyond just we're setting procedures and policies, we need to ensure that they're being followed through with. And again, that, that comes back to all, comes back to accountability for us, for our superintendent, for our administrators, all the way down, right? So, um, so that is a big component, of course, of what we do on a day to day basis. And then our role with, with public education obviously is huge. I mean, that's, that's what we're here for. You know, education isn't a line item on our agenda, right? It, it, it is the agenda, right? That's, that's why we're here, to promote public education, to give that education opportunity, again, to as many people as we can and, and provide the best outcomes that we can.
All right, communication with our community was brought up in several of the applications received. How would you help to ensure that the board and district leadership are better at reaching out to our community?
I think this is interesting and the reason I say that is, I did have communication as a component of my application and a lot of my communication was internal as well as external. And so I know that's not the direct question, but it is important that we keep communication open within ourselves, all the way down again to the student level. So with administration, with staff, communication internally is super important. So that is number one. But public communication, it's tough, I think it's a hard one. I mean, outside of, you know, we send correspondence, I get the emails, right? I get, get the correspondence of what's happening within the school or if something's changed or something's, you know, Forestview related for my daughter. I get that, I get those communication pieces. You know, you have open forums here where people talk, we don't respond, right? That, that's part of that setup. Is it something outside of setting up other meetings where the community can come in and get their feedback? And it is more of a meeting just set on those, those, those guidelines, if you will, of like, we need to hear, right? We need to hear that. And, and there's, like I said before, it's loud right now and there's a lot of people that have things to say and we need to listen. And so is it setting up things like that? But like I said, it's tough, you know, you, there's a lot of different avenues to get communication out there. A lot of times too, like I mentioned earlier, it shouldn't be reactive, it should be proactive. So as much as we can get out in the forefront of people, of our plans or what we're doing, I think we need to do that. But that's again, I think, the brainstorming and putting our heads together of what is the best avenues to get out communication? I don't know if I have the magic key to that. I think that's working together to figure out other creative ways that we can start communicating more with, with the public.
Question number 10. Tell us what your understanding of the time commitment is to be a fully engaged member of the school board.
Yep, my understanding is that, to me especially, this is, would be a second job. I've been on many boards where people, uh, maybe it's, maybe it's resume building or, you know, you look at it that way where they're coming to 12 meetings a year. That's, that's not a time commitment to me, that's not a true board member. We need to be active and engaged, so to me, this position is like a job. I mean, it's something that, I'll say this now, it's a little bit different because it's appointed rather than the community electing you at the moment. But, but it is, I mean, I'm thankful that I have an ownership that, in my current job, that allows me to take care of these type of situations. So if we have meetings at noon or need to have special meetings during a normal work hour for myself in general, I'll be able to attend those things. So it's important to me, I know there's committees, there's all these other things to serve on. So there's a lot of time commitment or responding to emails or responding to our community and that's a 24/7 thing in my eyes. You know, it's, it's a big part to be a servant and that's kind of back at the beginning. It's, is one of my qualities for, not sure quite where it came from. But being a servant to me is the best way that you can give back to your community. That's why I was a firefighter in Nisswa for the past 11 years. I mean, there's no better way to give back to my community than to serve. And I think that's why I want to be here on the board, is I want to serve, I want to give back to the school that I felt I got a lot out of and that I was proud to graduate from. And again, I want to give that same experience back. So I, I know the time commitment is, I'll say, great and it should be. We should, we should be dedicated to obviously the normal meetings, but special meetings or committee meetings that we're going to be on. I think that it's an all in situation. I don't think it's, it's, you can't be halfway, it's got to be all the way.
Okay. And you, you said you, you have a flexible, so meeting times are not an issue.
Yep, very flexible that way, you bet.
Okay. Before we get on to letting you ask questions, does anyone have any additional follow up questions for Derek? Okay, great. So how about, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I do and, well, I'll start with this one and we'll see how the time goes. But thank you again, I, I did have the opportunity to meet with a few of our board members and I thank you guys so much for that. I apologize that I didn't get a chance to meet with Director Nelson and Director Haglen. But, um, I'll ask this general question here, if you guys would, respond to me with, why would you tell somebody to join the board with you? I know that's kind of maybe something to think about, but if you had to encourage somebody and say, here's why you should join this board with me, what would your response be? I don't know who wants to field that first.
I can jump on that. I think I resonate with what you said about being a servant or servant leader. You know, I think that there is a lot going on in the community right now. And while I didn't grow up here, my children have benefited from a excellent public education. And I, so I feel personally that I should dig in and be responsible for that to be available to other children in the future. And so I would invite people to join in on, on that cause.
One of the things that always invigorates me is something that happened today and Kevin was there too and we were at a high school class for entrepreneurship. And I, I just like when I get to interact with the kids. It's not as often as I would like it to happen, but I try to jump on opportunities when I have it. Some of my favorite things are graduations and, you know, first day of school and all that stuff. So, you know, if you have a passion for kids, the Board of Education is the place you should be.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, echo those same comments, you know, certainly giving back to the community, I think is important. I think for me, for me personally, trying to demonstrate to our own kids the, the value of giving back. And I would maybe twist it 180 and also give advice as to why you should not join. And that would be as if there, if there's a personal agenda or item or two that you think you want to get fixed. That's, that'd be a horrible reason to get involved.
I would say that for, for me, through, through my particular lens, is I don't see a, a greater investment that I could build into other than the youth of our community. And I feel it's really important for an individual to, to, uh, put on the table that, that investment of time. And, and, and at this day and age, time is so valuable, extremely valuable. It's important that we spend time with our own individual family, of course. But if I'm going to invest anything else, like my time, I want to invest it into the youth of our community. We do that as coaches. But I, if somebody wants to be a part of that and invest in, in terms of our community and our youth, no better way to do that than the school board.
Yeah, for my part, I'm having a little bit of a PTSD flashback to campaigning a year ago. But what I would say is this, I think, as I thought about joining or trying to join an elected body, I think one of the challenges, and I said this last year, is that when you have an elected body, you get the six human beings that the voters send you. If you look at a board in almost any other context, specifically in the corporate world, those boards are generally cherry picked and hand picked because specific people in specific seats have unique skill sets and different, you know, acumen that they bring to the table. So I think it's one of those where, why I would say run for the board, run for the appointment is that if you feel strongly, you have some unique gifts and some unique perspectives that you can bring to this body, that would be the energy that I would use, among other things, but I think that, that that's true.
Thank you guys so much. Again, I should have led with this too, but I, I appreciate your guys' service on this board. I know that you didn't expect to have things that have happened during your terms here. But I think that, to be a little cheesy, you know, the, the night is always darkest before the dawn. And I think that the dawn is just around the corner and, and we need to be ready for it. So thank you guys again for the opportunity and the time.
Yeah, and just to let you know, we, we have four interviews tonight and then we have another one next week. So we'll be making the decision next week and whether you are chosen or not chosen, there's going to be another election coming the next fall and, you know, if you're passionate about it, you should consider running then too.
Perfect.
You'll have to either way.
That's right, that's right. All right.
You have any other questions for us?
I talked about it to the board earlier, yeah. Yeah, and, and just to let you know, if you were the chosen one, you wouldn't be installed until the first board meeting in December, so.
Do I have a couple more minutes or am I timed up? If that's okay for you.
You've got more time.
No, you've got time.
If you want to kick me out, that's okay. If, to be fair, I'd like to ask a question to Director Haglen and Director Nelson that I asked the others. What was like, so Director Haglen, if I start with you, what was the biggest surprise that you had when you came on the board? Some, and pandemic aside, what was your biggest, you know, when you got on the board, what was like, I didn't expect this? Or, you know, kind of the biggest thing that stood, stood out for you?
Hmm, that's 12 years ago. I don't know if it was so much a, a big surprise as much as, because I knew going into it, but there is a lot to learn. There's a lot to learn about the academics, the financial pieces, you know, all, all the, everything that goes along with it. There's just a tremendous amount of self-education that needs to, that you have to read and pick up on and ask the questions, be a part of. You know, it sounds like you're, you're kind of an all in when you say yes to a board and that's really required here. So it, it wasn't a surprise, it's, it's just, it was confirmed once I did start, I'll put it that way, that yes, indeed, you gotta, you gotta spend a lot of time. And it doesn't go away either.
Sure, thank you, appreciate that.
Um, I would say, and mine was even longer, 16 years ago. The complexity of, of the position as far as financials, how complex school district financing is and how data, education, curriculum, how complex that is. And, and also that there's not an easy answer. You know, I've learned that through my 16, 17 years. You know, we're working hard all the time of hoping to have this perfect school district and it, yeah. It's, we're working towards that goal, we'll probably never reach it. So it's a complex system and a big system. And it also takes a lot of time. I think I knew that come, going in, but it was probably even more time than I thought, so, that'd probably be it.
Well, again, thank you guys so much. I appreciate your time and the opportunity and be in touch at some point.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you guys.
Take care.
Shelley is here.
Okay. Let's send her in.
Hello, hi.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to meet all of you, thank you.
Yeah. So tonight, we're gonna, you receive the questions and we're gonna go around the table and ask the questions. And then at the end, if we have follow up questions, we'll, we'll do those there. And then the timing of this, if you were to be selected was, would be, you'd be appointed in the December board meeting, so.
December, okay, thank you so much.
Yes, yeah. So I'm going to start and welcome. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and what the qualities are that you have for our Board of Education.
My name's Shelley Munoz, I am a teacher at Pierce Healy High School. My son Matthew is a student at CLC. My other son, Matt Michael, works for Sourcewell and my daughter in law's an accountant in the area. And so the qualities that I think that I bring to the school board is I'm absolutely passionate about education. I'm a 23-year educator and I absolutely love STEM and science education. And so in this globally digitally ever-changing world, I think that that's definitely a strength that I would bring. And with all the work that I've done outside creating these great STEM programs, I feel like I've learned so much about 21st century thinking skills. And those are the skills that I would bring to the board. The first one is critical thinking. And so I know when we look at this last couple of years, there's a lot of issues that education has gone through. And so I think by having great critical thinking skills, I would be able to be a great member and finding solutions to problems and, you know, the way we handled things a few years ago are not going to work. So we're going to have to have some formative change with the things that things are continually to change. I also think creativity, being a STEM educator for so many years and having a STEM outreach, that's a nonprofit. It has to have a lot of creativity.
If you would like, you can take your mask off.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry, it's kind of like.
Yeah, I know. It's hard to do that much talking with a mask on.
But yes, creativity, thinking outside the box, because we're going to have a ton of challenges as we continue to go through the current situation of all that we're going through. So there has to be a lot of creativity and thinking of things that haven't been done before, but being bold to try those different things. And of course, collaboration, working with the team, there's no I in team, it's going to be a collective whole of all of us, creating formative change. And lastly, communication, being able to talk to others. But I think a great skill too is being quiet and listening to others, really understanding, listening to. listening to understand what is it they're trying to say and what is it that we're trying to accomplish as a whole. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Shelley. Next question is, what are your top two reasons for wanting to be appointed to this?
Well, I think Brene Brown brought this into the forefront, but it was actually Theodore Roosevelt who said it. And I'm going to paraphrase this quote because it's an amazing quote. But to paraphrase it, it's not the critic who counts. It's the one who, it's it's not the critic who counts, but the credit belongs to the man who's in the arena. And it basically goes on to say, dare greatly. And so my greatest reason for wanting to be appointed is I want to dare greatly. I want to dare greatly for our students. I want to dare greatly for our parents who have gone through a lot as well. I want to dare greatly for our teachers. Teachers have really, I am so blessed to be a teacher and I am amazed when I go on to things like Facebook support groups and stuff. But I want to dare greatly for them. I want to be dare greatly for administration with all of the topsy-turvy-ness of all the things that they've had to do. And I want to dare greatly for our community and to make the very best changes that we possibly can, because everyone's really gone through a tumultuous last couple of years. And it's going to take someone willing to stand in that arena to dare greatly. And I feel like that I'm ready to. I've worked so many years in education and I'm now ready to take that next step, to make formative change and to help create our community to go through these times of change too. The second reason is, it's all about kids for me. I love kids. I, that's my biggest why. Anything or any decision that I would make would be based on the outcome for our children of the district.
All right. Next question is, when it comes to the board-level decision-making process, what will your process for gathering stakeholder input and how are you prepared to support the mission of the district?
Okay, I definitely think input is going to be a priority. One of the ways that I think that we could gather input is through focus groups or outreach groups, listening to all stakeholders to see what their perspectives are and giving them a platform, in-person opportunities to communicate. And it could even be just as much as having like a support system where they come in and have a meeting and so forth. But I think through all of that, it's going to be really important to set priorities and to keep projects on track and have the best possible outcome. By setting these really powerful questions that we can ask to make sure that we have understanding, I believe that I would be prepared in that to define a purpose and scope, to reflect back to the stakeholders' input and to assign action items. Because let's face it, not one person can do all of these different items that were going to be required. And sometimes there might need to be some action items or team items taken from that. But with all of that input, it would be able to achieve the potential by providing the highest quality of programming and preparing our students for this changing global economy.
Thanks. What do you identify as the major strengths of Brainerd Public Schools?
There are so many things that I love about Brainerd. And so, you know, just showing my science geekness, is the planetarium is a really big plus for me. I can't wait till it opens. And I really do love the family and community values here. Just an animal lover, I think that the dog shelter program that you guys came up with, it's so research-based of how important and how helpful it is for students and to give them a platform. Just the recognition of staff and students, I think that's incredibly important, particularly in this past few years. It's been so hard. And to be able to recognize and thank our staffs and students, that's absolutely amazing. I think there's a great amount of ownership and accountability here that I really see as a strength. One of my favorite things that I have seen is the Lowell Gym Project, excuse me, and having kids fundraise and to be able to have that ownership within that. Because I think that creates a lifelong desire to stay within the community. They'll always have that memory that they were a part of that. That's an amazing strength to create that within the students. I'm a big advocate for Special Olympics, so that was a strength for me. And of course, the student-centered values, I think that that's so wonderful to see. And the leadership that's concerned with equity and fairness, that's a big thing for me as well. And the goals and directions of the district, I really think that that is a strength. And then when I do look at the socio-economic vastness of Brainerd, I think that you guys have done a really amazing job at keeping all stakeholders and being equitable as best as possible for all kids. And then lastly, academics, you have very high scores in academics in comparison. And of the 333 districts in Minnesota, you guys are ranked really well. And I just want to be a part of that team as well.
Next question, explain your understanding of the responsibilities of a School Board. What is an area in which the Board of Education can improve, can improve? How would you support the current board with this?
Okay, definitely a board member is a public servant. And so with that, responsibilities are going to fall on student achievement for all. And so the difficult decisions will have to come. And in that, sometimes you're not going to make everybody happy, and I understand that. But my why and my bottom line as a board leader is what is the best for our students? It will always come back to unequivocally whatever the situation is, what's best for their students in the School Board in those decision makings. Problem-solving with board members as a team and, you know, utilizing parents, students, all stakeholders through collaboration. And of course, really strong communication, that's really going to be key as a board member. Advocacy and communication, being the district's biggest cheerleader. So when I go out into the community, I will be the biggest cheerleader because that's part of the advocacy of what a board member should be doing. Of course, policy and governance and monitoring student achievement and always remembering the greater good. I think a board member is here basically for the greater good of the community and the school and all stakeholders. As far as improvement, I think as a board member, I would like to see a little bit stronger focus on diversity and health and safety of the children and possibly after-school activities that offer a broader scope of sequence. As far as to support these, I do believe that adhering to the policy 209 Code of Ethics is going to be really important. It's really important that all board members are aware of that and hold to those ethical policies. Listening to understand and adhering to the vision and strategic planning of the district.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What is your understanding of the opportunity gap between white, American Indian students as well as other students of color?
I do understand that there is a gap there. And I was just recently appointed by REA. It's the Racial Equity Advocate Cohort with Educating Minnesota. And part of being invited to be a part of that cohort is to bring different kinds of professional development and education to the districts around our central area. And I realize I'm happy to be a part of that because as a board member, I needed to learn more about equity and the gap and those different types of things like inclusion and so forth. And through the cohort, I hope to facilitate community learning experiences to help the racial equity and divide that we have. Part of the cohort too is to participate in conflict resolution and restorative justice efforts and to facilitate anti-racism mindset. So I'm very excited about that. But as a matter of fact, just two days ago, actually before I even knew about this, I was reading in the Science of Engineering and Medicine, it just recently published that 80% of children who are Black, Latinx, or Indigenous, 80% of them experience a gap in science. And so particularly with chemistry, physics, and biology. So I want to make sure that there's that equity for all of our students so they don't fall into that gap and have the free opportunities and access that everyone does as well. And so as a board member, I would like to work one-on-one with AIPAC, offering, you know, assistance in events and academic support to fill in those gaps. And I think through all the education that I will get this next year and that, I would be able to be a great advocate in that platform.
Good. Thank you. What is the responsibility of the Board of Education in guiding efforts of equity and inclusion?
Okay, equity and inclusion. So definitely by helping all students feel seen, helping all students feel heard, and helping all students feel understood. I think that that's a very big part. In order to do this, we're going to have to have well-stained staff, we'll have to be well-trained, increase the awareness of systematic barriers, because we do have systematic barriers in place, have meaningful conversations, meaning with SEL, social emotional learning, be self-managed, social awareness and response to decision-making. I think that it also, we need to especially support racial equity. And I think one way we could possibly do this would be by adopting an equity statement, not necessarily as a guide, but a framework to have the district move forward in equity and inclusion. I think that sometimes it's easy to fall into status quo. And so I would have a strong equity lens and being able to look at that and making sure that we're not just falling status quo, that we're pushing past those barriers and really looking at it. As a board member, it's very important to know your demographics and to understand that, you know, housing patterns, racial makeup of classes, identify trends that run through the school district, graduation rates, and what our community expectations are. So data awareness. And I really think as I'm working with REA, the cohort, it will expand my own journey and therefore I will be able to help expand knowledge and understanding of issues of race and equity within Brainerd's.
Next question. Explain your understanding of the difference between governance and management. What is the role of the School Board in regards to public education?
Okay. So governance is creating an accountability framework that will support each and every student. Governance is about coming together, kind of a big umbrella to make decisions based on vision and strategy of the district and taking all viewpoints into account. I believe that governance is also about the future. It's about looking forward and seeing what are our future goals and staying true to the core values that have been created, the mission statements, and supporting and offering leadership where needed. Whereas I think management is different, is that it is more of the daily, day-to-day involvement of matters. Management makes up operational decision, planning, and they're more involved in details. So I do believe as far as governance and the role of the Board in education is the greater good of all stakeholders, to always, that's the stakeholders, to always keep that in mind. I think that it is really important to understand vision and strategy, what are those of the district, advocacy and communication, being really strong in those areas, policy and framework, how will that work and being a strong advocate in those, goal and problem solving, and structure and accountability. And then the last part of governance that I think is really important in the School Board is organizational performance. And that is accountability of the superintendent and of course, the welfare of all children. So governance is a little bit different than our management system would be.
Communication with our community was brought up in several of the applications we received. How would you help to ensure that the Board and district leadership are better reaching out to our community?
Yeah, I think community voice and platforms are incredibly important, especially with what we've gone through in the last couple of years. And I won't kind of hide it. I've been watching school boards across the nation right now, and it's a really difficult situation. And that's why I went back to say, daring greatly. I want to be able to be a voice for, you know, all of the change that's taking place. And so I do think that open communication is going to be incredibly important, creating foundations of trust. And so that each person feels heard and understood. I do think sometimes forums are nice, to be able to have a mediator and a set agenda, possibly like index cards, to be able to ask questions and so forth. I think even maybe having board office hours to set up open door meetings for trust and communication. However, I do think with that, when there would have to be very clear guidelines and expectations of what that would entail. I do think committees are really important. When you look at the overarching span of the last couple of years, when we start to look at what went well during the pandemic, what didn't go so well. I mean, we have a lot of things we've learned, a lot of things we wouldn't do again. But I do think it's really important to have a task force to evaluate and to be able to have the public or the community be able to share in that decision-making, like, hey, we did this really good, but this not so much. And I know as an educator, I have learned a tremendous amount in the last couple of years. And so being able to have the community have an open forum to be able to discuss those. I do think surveys are great. That would be a great way. Social media. Evaluations are always important. I think it's important for all of us to critically look within ourselves and how are we doing and to be able to take, you know, constructive feedback and maybe make some changes with that. God bless you. And then, of course, work on effective personal communication. As we all are building our community, we would work on our personal communication skills that we have as well. Because everybody just wants to be heard and making sure that we're truly listening.
Question number 10. Tell us what your understanding of the time commitment is to be a fully engaged member of the School Board?
I do understand that the School Board meets regularly on the second and fourth Monday each at 6:00. But I've been really, you know, I think about my 23 years in education, I haven't really actually met too many School Board members as a teacher. And I was really lucky that I had an extraordinary example of the board member I would like to be. And his name is, he's from the Minifee Union School District, and his name is Robert O'Donnell. And from the first day I started that school district, I saw him at school, I saw him at events. But the thing is, is he would come through the classroom and it wasn't in an evaluatory sense, it was in a praising sense, like, I just want to see what you're doing. I love what you're doing. From 1983 to this day, he's still a School Board member. So he's actually a pillar of the community. And I think long-term, that would be the goal I would want for myself, for my family, and for my community, is to be someone who's there for the kids that have spent so many years in education, that ideally down the road, that's exactly what I would love. Another great role model that I have is my friend Jackie Johansson, who helped create STEM curriculum with myself with Minifee Union School District. And the reason I bring her up, and when I look at the time commitment, is that sometime it may not be our time. I realize full, I understand that life is very busy and I won't be able to go to every school event and so forth. But it's what we can give. And so she was a great example of, in my own classroom, she did a lot of research in biology and conservation and sustainability, and she was able to give that. And I think if I can't give my time, I can certainly give my resources of STEM and all the connections that I've been able to make through the astronaut training programs and NASA and some of the amazing, I feel so happy I've gotten to do this, to inspire our teachers and in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. So before we allow you to ask any questions you may have, I just want to make sure, see if the Board has any follow-up questions.
I think the same question that you asked with the previous candidate about flexibility. You know, we do have times when we sometimes do have noon meetings, for example, or we'll find out, you know, next week, we're needed in an advisory capacity at 8:00 AM or that sort of thing. How about flexibility of schedule for meetings that aren't the Monday night?
Yes, I do think my principal would be incredibly supportive because I know she knows that I'm here and doing this and so forth. I do think as long as I had a little bit of notice, that that wouldn't be a problem and that she does know that I'm here. And yeah, I think that that would be nice to be able to see different capacities than just the 6:00 board meeting.
Could you tell me what REA stands for?
Okay, yes. It's Racial Equity Advisor or Advocate.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I probably was talking fast. I'm sorry.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
I do. I think that with the past couple of years and how challenging it's been in education, what proactive changes do you see that the district may take in the next 10 years with taking all the things you've learned through the pandemic?
Well, one of the things, this is something we've already done, but we weren't a one-to-one school district. And the pandemic made us become one. So I think technology, and we have a great technology director, and just the changes in technology and able to do more combination of online and in-person learning and personalized learning through that.
And do you see that trend continuing forward?
Yes, I would say for sure that we need to, that's one of our goals is to.
And I love that because that was my biggest learning curve as well. And I'm like, why was I not doing this before?
And I don't know, do other people, other board members have other thoughts?
Technology is exactly, as Bruce said, I think is, it's going to be key and critical. It is today and it will be in the future.
And I think as we look at our 21st century learners, those are going to be critical skills for them to be, you know, competitive in the global market. skills for them to be, you know, competitive in the global market. So that's excellent.
Well, I'd say I've only been on the board for half of the pandemic, thankfully. But what I would say is I think, I think the overarching thing that's kind of hitting us in terms of culture, potential culture change, looking at a tenure, is which is what you asked. I mean, it's really, I think incumbent upon everybody from the board on down to begin to put a little bit more agility into our planning and into our processes where I think historically school districts were sort of archaic in how they approached some things.
I agree.
And that's, that's not an indictment of any school district, that's just sort of the nature of the beast, at least as an outsider, that's how I viewed it. And, and so I think there's a certain amount of nimbleness that we would, you know, that we, I think we try to get to now that maybe wouldn't have been as present in this room three or four years ago.
I understand. I think that's kind of an overarching theme throughout the United States, really, that, you know, flexibility.
And the other thing that I just thought of right now that Superintendent Larson said, since the one thing we really learned is we need to have our kids in person.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah.
I so agree with that.
I think that as a majority of the individuals involved with the school district became very experienced with operating outside of their comfort zone. And I think that can be very positive if we continue in that, in that trajectory to be, become even more comfortable with that as we look at different ways to serve students, to educate students, but also different ways to communicate as well.
I do think that maybe there were some fractures before, but the whole pandemic kind of split it open and put a spotlight on it. And so now we're able to look at those and create some really formative change with that. So thank you.
I guess what comes to my mind is leveraging the resilience that we all learn and our kids learned. You know, it's really easy to reflect back on the pandemic and it was, it's been difficult and horrible, of course, but the fact is that it is, so we can either look back and say, oh boo hoo, this has been so hard, or we can say, look at what these kids lived through and did and how did they grow and how will that actually serve them moving forward? Because change will always happen.
Change is always happening, yes.
So how can we look at this as a positive and not only reflect back on the pandemic as this huge blemish on our tongue?
Yes, yes.
Okay, wonderful. So just wanted to say that we have five candidates we're interviewing and four of them are tonight and one of them's next week, so we will be making a decision next week. And I'm encouraging each and every one of you because we have wonderful candidates for this process, which I was so grateful for, that if, if you do get selected, great. If you don't get selected, we have upcoming elections in a year, less than a year from now. So it would be August, I think, when you register for those. So anyway, but we won't be making any decisions until next two, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay. It was such a pleasure to meet all of you and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're running a little bit early, but is Tom Peterson here?
No, he's here.
Okay, you ready to do another one?
I'm gonna go blow my nose.
Okay, do you want to take a brief break?
It's like 30 seconds.
Okay.
I thought you might update the picture to something better. Might even be somebody else when I get it.
Or younger.
Younger's good.
The year I was born.
Mine always looks like I've been arrested already, handed to the cop and he's like, wow, your mug shot already.
Sometimes when I blow my nose, it scares people.
Yes. Good evening, Tom.
Hi.
Nice to see you again.
Good to see all of you, too.
So we have a set of prepared questions, which you have received, too, and we'll go through those first and then we'll ask any follow-up questions if we have any. And then there'll be time for you to ask us questions if you have.
I have two questions.
Okay.
So we'll keep that short, part of it short.
And then just so you know that we have another interview, we had four today and one next Wednesday, so the decision will be made next Wednesday.
Okay, perfect.
And then you'll, whoever is the person will be sworn in at the December board meeting at the November, which we had previously thought it might be. So starting, just tell us a little bit about yourself and what qualities you bring to our board.
Sure, thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity and the honor to interview for the position. I've spent a lifetime in education, starting off in New York Mills, just down the road, and then in Staples as a library media person. I then moved to Sioux Falls, South Dakota, where I was Director of Media and Technology for the Sioux Falls School District, which is the largest district in South Dakota. At that time was about 13,000. When I left, it was almost 19,000. So a growing district with lots of opportunities and so on. I have, I retired from that position, had an opportunity to do some consulting and so on, moved to help my parents who were having some health issues at the time, then met a wonderful lady online and moved to Brainerd 17 years ago. Since I moved here, I've worked in financial services for a few years and then at Atomic Learning, which was a educational institute, corporation in Little Falls. And then for the last three years, I've worked as an online customer service person for a company called Well North. Basically, they did online education and I was an online, I was a customer service person, helping students and teachers how to better use the system. Education's kind of the family business. My mom was a librarian. Two of my sisters were teachers, I have a daughter who's a teacher. So I'm vested in education. I think it's important and a great calling. I wanted just things that I would bring to the board. I have a great background in education, curriculum development, a lot of training and leadership technology and staff development. I want to say that first of all, I'm a team player. I believe in a full discussion of the issues that might come forward, but when it all comes down to it, we need to come to some type of consensus and move forward with that. I have a background on several boards from the, having served about 10 years on the Brainerd Library Board, the Kichigami Regional Library Board. I currently serve on the North Long Lake Association Board, where we deal with a number of issues, including invasive species. And during my career in education, I also served on a number of national boards, both as an officer and in professional development for that.
Great, thank you, Tom. Second question is, what are your top two reasons for wanting to be appointed to the school board?
Well, I guess I have a why story, you know? First of all, when I had a cousin who was a former superintendent who apparently gets the MSBA clippings, and he texted me and said, are you the Tom Peterson who's interviewing? And I said, yes. And he wrote back in all caps, why? And I said, well, maybe I'm a glutton for punishment, but really, what I am is I believe in service. Education's important to me. I think it's important to serve the students, the parents and our staff to be, you know, the best district that we can. I really, and the other reason is, I really believe in service-based leadership, that we're here to accomplish a task and that I want to be part of that, to do that. And that's what's important to me.
Very good.
Oh, I should also say, too, that I'm here because I do have, and I want to make full disclosure, I made an error in my submission. I have five grandchildren in the school district and you don't believe the amount of grief I felt for, that got publicized. I do have five grandchildren in the school district, one of which I was helping do some student driving before I came here, so I figure if I can survive that, I'm good to go here.
I remember those days.
So when it comes to the board level decision-making process, what will be your process for gathering stakeholder input and how are you prepared to support the mission of the district?
Well, I, first of all, I, you know, I strongly believe that as a school board member, you need to be aware of the channels that are available to you. I would want to make sure that in any of the action plans that we work with, that we have all of the stakeholders clearly identified and that we work with those stakeholders, whether we're, you know, as an informational basis or we're preparing for an action plan. I would want to see that the action plans that are presented, you know, clearly identify the stakeholders. And if I was chosen to be a liaison on that, you know, I would want to carefully listen to them. And, you know, obviously we have different stakeholders. We have parents, we have people who are not, who are part of the district but don't have kids in school. That's a very important block that I, you know, hope that we can do more to address. And obviously we have students and staff, so we want to make sure that those are identified when appropriate and that they're, you know, given the opportunity to provide their input on a free-flowing basis and let us do that. I think I'm a really good listener. I like to listen and I like to listen before I speak. So, you know, make sure that I, you know, get the right information for that. I'd also, you know, of course, we have, I would have a email account. I've emailed all of you once or twice. I would respond to those with the idea that, you know, I'm thanking them for their information but not getting any type of discussion with them or, you know, back and forth. Also, we would want to make sure that we have stakeholders who are part of the business community, if they have other expertise, we'd want to hear from them.
Tom, what do you identify as the major strengths of Brainerd Public Schools?
Well, I think first and foremost, the main strengths that the district has are the staff and administration of the district. I think it's very important that we recognize them. One of the things that I developed over a period of time was, you know, being able to say thank you, to appreciate their accomplishments, recognize their struggles and be involved with them. So that's just part of the nourishment process. I think the other one, the areas that I have is, I think we enjoy community support for the most part. I think that was obviously evidenced by the passage of the school bond, you know, in a store for an historic mount. And that really addressed, really I think struck a message with people, whether they had students or not, that, you know, we were striving for an equitable facilities for all students where they are. I think, too, that it appears to me that we have excellent district policies and that those have been well-developed and are follow-throughed on. And last of all, I like the discussions that I've heard that the board is committed to equity, not only on a facilities basis, but for students as a whole, whether that, and equity and, you know, for a sound and good education. I think that's so important in this day and age, that we recognize that every student has, has the need and the ability to succeed and that it's our job to find the best way to do that.
Question number five. Explain your understanding of the responsibilities of a school board. What is an area in which the Board of Education can improve? How would you support the current board with this?
Well, the school board is the governing board of the district. That's by state statute. I think it's important to remember that, you know, and be able to convey that we are a governing board and not a, and I know that's covered in a later question, but we're not the managers of the district. And I think we need to be able to see that we are receiving good information from the staff, that we're presented with action plans that are reasonable and that those action plans are evaluated for their degree of success and what we want to do with that. So the board is, you know, kind of the overall one, they're responsible for making sure that we have planning and that we execute a process, that we do identify the goal, that we are meeting the goals and the mission of the district, that we're setting those district priorities and that we're meeting those district priorities as a whole. So one, you know, we asked about an area that we could improve on. I think an area that we can always improve on is communication. One of the things I would like to see, you know, in particular, is a district website. It's got a lot of great information. I think it's not sometimes terribly user-friendly. Just having, you know, doing a little research on things, you know, I really had to, for a lot of times, I just had to use the search function, which was good, that was excellent. But, you know, I think most people, you know, they kind of see stuff, they like to point click and do that stuff. I'd also like to see it more graphic oriented and incorporate more video and so on. One of the good ways that I think we can do that would be to involve students with that. I think they've got a lot of skills with that, they'd have some, we could find some people who have some interest in that and they could obviously work with our staff to improve that as well. I certainly would be willing to serve on any committees or any type of thing that work to enhance communication. I would certainly like to see, you know, board profiles on this, on the website, you know, things that we can do to make it more user-friendly. So that would be my things that I could do, but I'm always willing to jump in where needed and work with you as a board to, you know, get the best that we can.
Thank you. So what is your understanding of the opportunity gap between white, American Indian students as well as other students of color?
Well, that's kind of a, I don't want to say a sad situation, but it's a, in a situation that needs attention. Obviously, in Minnesota, we have good school districts. On whole, we do an excellent job. I think the, just the 2019 report from Federal Reserve Board, however, was able to gather some data that showed that students of color do not, are not succeeding as well as their white counterparts. And that data showed unfortunately that, I'm sure this board is aware, that particularly students of American Indian descent were the, the race that was having the most gap. So I know that that is an important subgroup of our district. I would be interested to see the disaggregation of the test scores, to see how we're doing in particular and what action plans that we have to make sure that we go along with meeting that mission where we serve all students and that we're seeing that we're doing that over time. It's going to take a while, that, that gap is considerable, but it needs to be a priority and we need to be aware of it, talk about it as we move forward.
Good, thank you, Tom. What is the responsibility of the Board of Education in guiding efforts of equity and inclusion?
Well, I think first of all, the board has to take responsibility for that. It needs to be a priority in everything that we do. Otherwise, it just becomes, you know, a good talking point. Yeah, we're doing this, but what really are we doing? And do we have programs in place that are, you know, addressing this and doing that? We need to make sure that as a board, that we are instructing our administration to include activities and action plans in there that address equity. We as a board always have that oversight responsibility to see in the end, how did we do? And make sure that if we didn't quite meet where we wanted to be, that we, that we address that in the next year's planning. And if we did do well for that year, again, a big believer in, you know, complimenting those people who are working out in the buildings to achieve that goal.
Explain your understanding of the difference between governance and management and what is the role of the school board in regards to public education?
Well, you know, the school board obviously is the governing body of the district. You're the policymaking board. And really, from my understanding and my belief, you really only have one employee and that's Dr. Larson. You know that, you give her the responsibility to go out and hire a team, to do the planning, to bring back the information. to bring back the information to you that you need to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the goals and objectives of the district. So really, you're responsible kind of for evaluating her performance. That's really based on a lot of people underneath her doing a great job as well. But in the end, we're not, we're not a managerial function. That's the function of administration. Of course, we are going to be, as board members, we're going to be the receptors for complaints and that's okay. But we need to pass those complaints on to, what would be my feeling, that we need to pass those complaints on to the administration so that they can be addressed appropriately and responded to. But again, the kind of the difference between governance, which is our, our role, planning, evaluating, and kind of going through that cycle again for continuous progress towards the goals that we want to have as a process.
Thank you. Communication with our community was brought up in several of the applications we received. How would you help to ensure that the board and district leadership are better reaching out to our community?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I think communication is so important. You can't really over communicate in this, in this business. I think we have, you know, we have a great start in the social media area. Obviously, we have Facebook and Instagram. I don't know if we have Snapchat or not. I'm not a Snapchatter and I don't particularly like the app. But, you know, those are things that we need to do that. I think there's some things we can do in our website to, again, make it, you know, more communication to do that. But I also think we can't ignore the other forms of media that are available to us. I don't want to call them old fashioned, but I think we could do more on radio and newspapers to get our message out on a consistent basis, you know, maybe semi monthly or bi monthly, monthly, so that there is always, you know, that they know that, hey, the last week of the month, there's going to be an article or there's going to be an interview on the radio or something like that where we can, you know, improve those communication responsibilities that we have. I also, as I indicated before, I'd like to see our students become more involved in the communication processes of the district. We have a great technology system in the district, I think that could be leveraged to do student based productions that could be used, whether it be on the website or, or other things. Maybe they can help us with other things. One of the big things, I don't know if this is an idea that's been advanced before, but I would certainly like to entertain the idea of at some point actually having a student member of the board to look at something like that. Because I think obviously, we need to communicate with our students as well and they need, I think, need to feel that they have a way that they can communicate directly with the board on a basis, you know, kind of a even footing basis, so to speak. Obviously, that person, there's a lot of things that that person wouldn't vote on. That person wouldn't vote or have a thing like that, but they would be there listening to the discussions, giving their input when, when they feel necessary. But again, that would be something I would see as another good communicative strategy for getting more people involved.
Question number 10. Tell us what your understanding of the time commitment is to be a fully engaged member of the school board?
Well, I know that there's probably a lot more time involved than I'm probably aware of. It's, there's a lot of times, obviously, I think the public is probably just thinks that, hey, oh, they just have two meetings a month and, you know, that's not so bad, three hours. But I know that there's a lot of other committee meetings and special meetings that go into that. Also, with being a school board member, I know that you probably have community commitments as well, whether that would also be, you know, and obviously, I would want to increase my attendance at school, district related events, both at the school and that, whether it might be activities or programs or whatever. Again, that's a time commitment that you have. But I think also there's that time that you just spend preparing, reading stuff that's sent to you for prep for the board meeting. You know, maybe you, you know, read educational clippings, you know, that type of thing to kind of keep up with what's the latest and greatest out there. Maybe you'd like to attend a school board type of that. So I know that there's, you know, a significant amount of time that that's not, that's, I wouldn't call it, I just call it off the books, so to speak, and out of sight. And I would be aware of that. On a personal note, I am retired, so my days are pretty well. As long as you don't schedule anything between 3:00 AM and 7:00 AM in the morning, I'm good to go. I do have another commitment each day at that time. And I also, you know, again, in full disclosure, I do have a commitment for a trip in February, for most of February and early March. So, but I would certainly work with a schedule so that I would have least impact on my meeting attendance or attendance at other functions.
Okay, thank you. So before we allow you to ask us questions, I'm just going to see if anyone, any of the board members have any follow up questions. Kind of answered the one follow up question we've been having, so about time. So, okay, do you have any questions for the board?
Well, I have two really, as I said. First of all, is there a structured onboarding process for new board members? And what, if so, or what, even if not, but, you know, what would you see that involving?
That's it? Okay, oh, that's on there? Yeah, there, MSBA provides training. So in January, the new appointee could go, well, we go down to the MSBA conference in Minneapolis. And during that, I think it's right before the start of it, there's the phase one and the phase two training. And I think there's total of four phases of school board training. So I think all of us have taken, I don't know if the new board members have taken all of them, but most of them. So, and one and two are required. Yes.
Good.
Yeah. So, and then obviously, probably Superintendent Larson and myself would meet with the new board member prior to the board member just to go over it. And you'd be assigned certain committees and, and boards and stuff like that. So what else? What else did we do for you newbies? Anything?
I think you threw us in and laughed.
We smirked a little.
No, I think there's, there's just really good supports too between us. You know, when I have questions, I reach out to Kevin, who's also new, or I reach out to a senior board member and, and just ask, what do I, what do I need to know about this? What should I expect? So I would say we're generally supportive of each other that way.
Yeah, we're, we're a good group.
Yeah.
Oh, my other question was, is I would, you know, if any of the board members would be willing to respond to what your change in your, you know, your perceptions and of the, of being a board member were at one year versus what they were when you first got into it? And what those changes were and kind of how you adapted to it?
Well, Kevin and I get a pass because we've only been doing this for 10 months. I'll let other people who have been at it longer maybe comment first.
Well, I don't, again, I don't know that, that there was, you're asking about the change or what might have been different from early on versus now. I don't know if the challenges are any greater, at least from my viewpoint. There, but there is just a continuous, for me personally, the continuous push for change and for making things better, regardless of what the topic might be. I'm a change advocate, so I'm, I'm always interested in how we can do things differently, better, smarter. You know, so it's just kind of a constant, a constant change, if you will.
Yeah, I, you know, I've learned so much over. I've, I've been on almost 16 years now and, and I've learned so much. And I wish I knew everything back when I started that I know now because I would have been a much better board member early on. But, you know, getting into it, I, I don't, I don't think I realized how much work it involved and how much, I said to another candidate that, you know, the financial structure of the district is very, very complex and it gets only more complex with COVID relief money and everything else. So, and building bonds and everything. But, yeah, it's been a great experience, a lot of work, some really good times and some really hard times.
Sure.
So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, yeah, I think so. You know, it's obviously, I think things change over time and what was true five years ago probably isn't true today. Or if it is, it has a different flavor to it. I enjoy that. I enjoy being part of the change process. I'm comfortable with change. I do, however, realize that some people are not very comfortable with change and we need to make sure that we make accommodations for those people, whether it be staff development or, you know, just listening to what they have to say. You know, allaying fears that may be true, may not be true. I think that's an important part of being, you know, change, you know, incorporating change is that, you know, we identify, you know, ways that we can help the people that are out there actually, you know, having to make the changes and that we can support them and, and give them some room to grow as well.
Thank you, yeah. So just to let you know, we have more, one more interview on Wednesday, next Wednesday. So we'll make our decision then. And we've had, we had Ted applicants and very quality applications, really high quality. So I want to, I'm encouraging each of you, whether you get, if you don't get selected on this one, to for sure consider running next fall. So, but we'll have a decision and I think Superintendent Larson, you and I will modify the person next Wednesday.
Okay.
I just want to make sure too, Tom, did you say you have two questions? Because we do...
Oh, that was two. There was, one was an onboarding process and the second one was a change.
Okay, right, right. Oh, thank you. Yes, you got, okay, good. I want to make sure we're not rushing you.
Not a problem.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you. Thank you for applying and thank you for your time.
You bet. I will give this to you. It's kind of some notes that I had. It's kind of a bulletized thing of that just because I know there is a week in between. So if you wish to share that with the board members, you certainly can.
Okay, well, thank you.
Because sometimes I know my memory isn't always the best. Sometimes it's time to go. Again, I do appreciate the time and good luck with the whole process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're kind of ahead of schedule. Yeah, so, okay, so we can take a break.
Like a minute to breathe?
How about this? I'll come around and shake your hand. Thank you for having me.
Hi, Sarah. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah.
And Sarah, you can take your mask off since you'll be doing a lot of talking.
Oh, thank you. I thought you guys might appreciate that, being able to hear me. Great.
Okay, I guess we can get started. So we're, we're going to go around the table and ask the questions that you have. And then at the end, before you ask us any questions that you want to, we'll see if we have any follow up questions. And then the process for this is we have one more interview on next Wednesday and then we'll decide at the end of that. And I've been telling all the candidates this, whether you get selected or not, we're just so impressed with all these candidates that if you get selected, we hope you'll run again next fall because you'll need to, to stay on the board. But if you don't get selected, we also hope you will run next fall. So, yeah, so anyway. But we'll get started and I'll start with just having you tell us about yourself and what qualities you'd bring to the board.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you for having me tonight, board, Superintendent Larson and everybody else in the room and outside the room. A little bit about myself. We've lived in Brainerd probably 18 years and, you know, I said that aloud, it sounds like a long time. And my background is in marketing and public relations, journalism and education as well. And so I have degrees in all those areas, most recently completing my degree a few years ago, getting my MBA. And so I think some of the unique qualities that I probably bring to this position is I, I work for an organization that is governed by a board and I have worked for several others that are. So I, I have an understanding of how that governance works, I guess, and just the, the ability to work strategically with those teams within leadership and, and execute against that and where those, those roles play, I guess, between a board and the leadership and the execution. I think some of the other unique things I bring to the table is just the perspective on education. Having been a classroom teacher before and growing up in a household full of, of teachers and administrators, I just feel like I've, I've lived in that world, although it was many, many years ago. I won't say how many. I, I'm still the product of educators and I, I live that dearly. So I think that's something that I uniquely bring to the table. I, I am a lifetime learner. I love to learn. I am humbled to have the opportunity to continue to learn and get better. And I, I think nobody ever stops learning. And so I, I truly believe that whoever steps into this role and if it's me, I'm, I'm going to make mistakes and I'm going to learn and I'm thrilled that there would be people around me that are doing it well. And so I think that's the unique quality, right? I bring is just humility and, and knowing that leadership is not perfect, so.
Great, thank you, Sarah. What, what are your top two reasons for wanting to be appointed to the board?
I know people might look at this right now and think it's not an enviable place to be, right? But I truly believe, you know, growing up, my family always said, you get to create the community that you want to live in. And I think you, you do that by participating. And so I, I want to participate. And I think not just, not just because it's a priority for us as a, as a society, as a community, but because it's, it's a priority in my heart that, that we think about kids in this community. We think about how we're building the future. And I think, you know, one of the other things I think about is just role modeling that even for our students. What does it look like to participate in, in education and to participate in being a part of, of building that community? And I see, you know, secondly, I see teachers out there giving it their all. I see people stepping up to coach my kids and all kinds of activities. I see all different ways people are, are giving to that process and I feel like this is one of the ways that I can.
So Sarah, when it comes to the board level decision making process, what will be your process for gathering stakeholder input? And how are you prepared to support the mission of the district?
This was a huge question. I kind of wish we wouldn't have gotten the questions ahead of time because I would have liked to have been surprised by this one because it's, it's a big question. There are so many stakeholders in this district, if you think about it. I think about, you know, the business community and parents who are stakeholders in real time. You know, they've got kids in the district, but even people that live in this community and, and want to see it prosper and love the reputation and the growth. I think there's so many stakeholders out there that really, when we say stakeholders, they've got a stake in what happens in this district. And I think, you know, how do you get feedback from all of those people? And I, I see it being done really well by this board and I think I would emulate that. I see you out there at community events, at public events, at school events and, and listening and participating in the community. And it's, it's hard to not have the perspective of the community when you're out there with them. Because you, you know, these people, they're your neighbors and, and the people that you work with and your business partners and so forth. So I think that's one way for sure. And I think, you know, this group has done a great job of listening and responding through email. I think there's, there's lots of ways that you can gather feedback. But I think one of the important pieces, and you mentioned, you know, how, how do you support the mission through that and think about the mission through that? I think one of the important pieces of the mission for the district as we're thinking about the community is that chunk that says, the community partnership. You know, it is a big deal for us to think about as a community, how we contribute to the success of the district. And I, I heard in passing the other day, somebody said, well, this won't be anything new. You know, we're in a pinch with, with our bus driver situation. What are they going to do about it? What are they gonna do about it?" And I, I kind of was processing that a little bit and I thought, "What are they gonna do about it?" And I'm like, "They" is us. What are, what are we gonna do about that? You know, our school, it's our school, it's our community. We've got a stake in that, what are we gonna do? And so, I think as we live out that mission, not just as a district, but as a community, it's our responsibility in and out of the district to, to really think about, "How are we helping these students achieve their potential?" Because there's lots of ways to do that.
Thank you. Sarah, what do you identify as the major strengths of Brainerd Public Schools?
I had to really narrow this one down because I, I had a laundry list and it was probably more than two minutes first. So, um, first and foremost, I feel like the people of this district, the character of the district and the integrity, I just, my children have had such a wonderful experience here. All of their teachers and coaches and activities have really built up who they are. And so, I think first and foremost, the people and witnessing that, that passion that they bring to their jobs, for sure, I would say. I would say one of the other things that really stands out to me is our commitment to students first and foremost. I, I feel it through this team, I feel it, um, when I'm with my teacher friends, when I am out there in public, that we always give the student a place at the table when we're making decisions. And it's, it's the primary spot. It's not an afterthought and, and that might seem like, "Duh, that's what schools do." You know, that is the business of schools. But you think about the, the technology and, you know, the curriculum, all of these things, these projects that, and facilities, all these things that happen within schools. And, um, it's, it would be easy to get distracted and to let that primary position for that student fall away. And I, I think this, this district does a really good job of reminding ourselves that students are the important person in the room.
Question number five, explain your understanding of the responsibilities of a school board. What is an area in which the Board of Education can improve? How would you support the current board with this?
So, that's three questions. Sneaky. I, so, you know, I mentioned first and foremost, it's about students. I think still, school boards look out for students. It's, it's not in line on the agenda, it is the agenda, right? And so, I think, um, from a nuts and bolts standpoint, the, the responsibilities of a school board are to help set the, the mission and the policy and kind of chalk the field and, um, let the leadership kind of take that and execute against it in, in the best way they know possible. I, I trust our educators have this strong mindset of pedagogy and instruction and our leaders have this strong mindset of administration and management and teamwork. And I see the board having a strong mindset of governance. And I think that's, that's the role, you know, in my experience, um, being on boards and, and working for organizations that have been governed by really fantastic boards, that that's how it works best is to have that, to have those distinctive roles. So, as for, you know, how, how would we improve upon that? What suggestions might I give? And I, you know, I think one of the things boards struggle with, and I don't, I don't think it's even the board that struggles with it. It's the, you know, the community or the folks that, that aren't in the middle of that board, understanding what the board's role is. And even, you know, there's so much information that comes to a board because the board needs that context. You know, they need the information on, on how things are going, what strategies are working, to be able to understand if the vision's being met. But I think a lot of people don't understand that that's not an actionable item for the board. And so, I think that's, that's not helpful for the board. It's not helpful for, you know, leadership and site administrators who are tasked with making those day-to-day decisions. And we want them to be empowered to do that, to carry out and execute against the plans. So, I think that's one of the areas. And I don't, I don't have the answer on how we improve upon that. But I, I think it's, you know, a great lesson for, for all communities to think about how a board operates and, and what they actually get to decide upon.
My turn. Sarah, what is your understanding of the opportunity gap between white and American Indian students as well as other students of color?
You know, from a, I know from a global perspective and I, I'm sure that's not where this question was going, but I know even Minnesota really struggles in this area. And I know, um, from infancy to adulthood, the opportunities and the opportunity gap for these groups is enormous. And I think some of the areas where they're, they're trying to bridge that or focus attention long-term, it's not gonna solve the problem today, is in that early childhood area. But I know, you know, from our district standpoint, I've heard, um, Mr. Martha say that we're, they've been directed by the board to, to take a look, a deeper look, kind of zoom in on some of that data within our district. And I think that's amazing. And I think what's come out of that is probably some, some places where we've got some actionable items. And I, you know, I wrote down a couple of the takeaways from that presentation that we, that race-based achievement gaps do exist and that, you know, how can we use structures that we have in place to address those individual needs of those students? And the one thing that I thought was interesting as well that I pulled out from that is that differentiation must occur in the core instruction and we can't intervene our way out of this. And I think, um, leaning on interventions is something we, we all want to do, but it does come down to the core instruction. And so, I was, I was intrigued by that and I was encouraged by that. And I'm proud of this district for elevating this. And I think when you name something and you own it, you can, you can take action on it. And I was thinking about, you know, even thirty to forty years. Okay, I'm not gonna say years anymore because I'm just aging myself, but many years ago, when I was at school and my, my oldest brother had muscular dystrophy and intellectual disabilities and he, our district struggled, really struggled to figure out how to educate him while, I mean, even physically in the building, you know, with a wheelchair. And I think about how far we've come, you know, in those last thirty, I'm not gonna say years again, to be better at that because we've called it and we've owned it and we've said out loud, "This is, this is something we need to take on." So, I'm really hopeful. I'm proud that we're, we're taking this on and having these conversations.
Good, thank you, Sarah. What is the responsibility of the Board of Education in guiding efforts of equity and inclusion?
You know, I, that's, I love this question. We do a lot of work around this in my workplace and I, it's, it's given me a lot of my own awareness and my own biases and, and how I show up in the world. But I, I heard Assistant Superintendent Heidi Hahn say a while back, "You know, we want everyone to show up for school and not have to shed who they are. We want them to be who they're gonna be when they come in the building." And I think that's so important and I think it's really hard and it's probably really hard for students. But if you can't, I mean, think about it, I think about that for myself. If I had to walk into work and, and couldn't be who I was, I couldn't perform well. And I think students wouldn't be capable of learning well if they, if they didn't feel safe and like they belong. And so, I think it's imperative that we think about this as a district and I think incrementally get smarter, right? The, the presentation that Erin Carlgaard gave to our district advisory committee the other day, she was talking about, you know, "We don't even think about, I'm, you know, the, the biases we have." And she gave the example, and I'll use myself, you know, of, "If someone were to see me out in my car driving around, they'd think, 'She's a female, she's an older female. I know how she's gonna drive.'" And setting that aside and saying, "Maybe she'll surprise me," or, you know, that I have that, even that realization, like that's immediately where my mind went, is a, is an awareness. And I think there are small incremental things we do as a district with that awareness. You know, for example, when I was a kid, we had grandparents' day and I, most schools probably did. And I, it didn't even occur to me, you know, it was awesome, I got to have my grandparents there for the day, but, but not every kid did. And, you know, how that diminishes that sense of belonging and that sense of, "I'm included in this," you know, instead of being on the outside looking in at that happening. So, I think, I think as a district and as a school board, we, you know, it's our job to kind of chalk the field on that vision and that's probably happening. I know some of that is already happening and support it, be a cheerleader for that work to be done.
So, can you explain your understanding of the difference between governance and management? And what is the role of the school board in regards to public education?
So, I, I think we, I talked a little bit about this, but I think, um, you know, government is, is the setting of direction and, and putting together a policy and management is implementing and executing against that. I think the role of, of the board is that, that vision and goals and, and that governments and the, you know, the job of leadership is to execute against that and implement on it. I think, you know, it's, it's really important that the board not disengage from the, the rest. And I, I think our board doesn't do that and I, I don't see a lot of boards that do because I think it's so important to have that cohesive support and relationship and understanding and context, you know, of, of what is, what, what's happening in the building and that there's a systems focus, you know, that there's an impact any time a decision is made, that it's, it's not just one thing, you have to connect the dots and at the, there's impacts at every level. And I think even modeling that kind of give and take, um, you know, as, as a school district and providing education, I think that's great for our students to see and to understand how that governance works. And so, I think the, the role of the school board is, is to help with that direction and to oversee the governance and chalk the fields and, and make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable and holding the district accountable to, to getting, um, those goals achieved that we set out.
So, Sarah, communication with our community was brought up in several applications we received. How would you help to ensure that the board and district leadership are better reaching out to our community?
If you guys master this, let me know. As a PR and marketing professional, um, I, I get this question a lot, even at work. And, you know, you, I think about communication in, in two ways. So, there's a push and there's a pull, right? And so, you can push the information. And I think we do a great job at that. And I know, I, I got a push of information from the, the district, um, from the high school today or maybe yesterday. And I, I'm the kind of person that read it immediately. I felt like I was communicated to, I was in the loop and it was great. And there probably are other folks that got that and don't want to read it and they want to search out their person and ask their questions, you know, if it's a neighbor down the road or whatever. And, um, there's, you know, how many, six thousand families? I don't know, in the, in the district, how do you accommodate those, those folks that want to push and those folks that want to pull and, and do it in a consistent way? And I think it's hard because everything we do is public, right? You know, my organization as well. And so, staying, staying ahead of the story, to be able to provide a consistent message is, is really hard. And if there's not one out there, as we know, people will create their own story. And so, I think that happens organically because we are a big district. But I know one of the things that's worked for us even is creating just, you know, "Here's the questions that we're getting and here's, you know, three or four bullet points on the facts" and, um, giving everyone access to that so that when I get that question out in the community, I'm gonna answer it the same way as the two hundred and fifty other people that I work with. And, and I think that's important. And not everybody's gonna use it, but it's important enough that it changes perception in the community if we're, if we're not doing that, sharing a consistent message and staying in front of, sharing a message, sharing the story.
Question number ten. Tell us what your understanding of the time commitment is to be a fully engaged member of the school board?
I'm imagining it's, it's a lot. And then I would guess I'd probably double that a lot. My understanding is, I mean, beyond what I, I see out in public of the meetings and prep for the meetings and committees and events and activities, I have no misgivings about the kind of time commitment this group makes. And, um, I, I know what I'd be signing up for. I think I know what I'd be signing up for in this and probably then should double that. But I, I'm humbled and grateful that folks do this and that you guys do this, so.
Thank you.
Okay, before we let you ask us questions, I want to see if anyone has any further follow-up questions from Sarah's answers. The one we've kind of asked everyone is, um, sometimes we have meetings, middle of the day or whatever, how flexible are you to get to different meetings?
I do have flexibility. I work from home mostly, so I do have flexibility.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. So, do you have some questions for us?
I do have a couple of questions for you. In thinking about, I know a few of you have been on the board longer than others, but just wanting to know what I'm stepping into, is there anything that truly surprised you when you stepped into this fall and you're like, "I never even thought of that" or "Nobody would even think to know that"?
This might be good for the newest board members.
I mean, for me, we kind of already covered it. I think it was, I don't know that I understood, I think I understood the aggregate time commitment, but I didn't understand the complexity of what you do with that time. In other words, there's a learning curve, obviously, that we'll be on for some time. Maybe it never ends, as Tom was saying earlier. But I think it was, it was, you know, I kind of had budgeted a certain amount of time for it, but, um, it was more about participating than it was about learning in my head. And for me, it's become more about learning than it has about participating. So, maybe it's just a nuance perhaps, but that's a big deal because that's a, that's an intellectual change of gears. Because then if you, if you spend enough time on it, then if you're, if you're somebody like me that likes to think things through a lot, then you, like you said earlier, you, you've sort of doubled the time because now you're running it back through again and, and trying to make sure you learned what you learned. Where if you just have to sit at a desk and listen or answer an email, that's a whole other deal.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks, Kevin.
I would share one other thing with you, Sarah, and, and, um, and I, maybe I didn't realize this going into it, but you will be, whether you vote for something or against, whether you vote with the, the board or you stand alone, you're gonna be criticized and ridiculed either way. And, and might be, you know, you're, you're lumped into a group of, "Well, why is the board doing that?" even though you don't believe that or vice versa. So, it's one of those things that you, you kind of need a tough skin to, um, be able to deal and handle and handle that. My wife always says, "Well, for me, it just rolls off my back, it doesn't impact me, but for others, it's gonna be different." And that is something that I didn't realize going into it, but it's been twelve years now and,
Did it take all twelve years?
No, I, I, I just naturally, I, I don't want it to bother me. But that is something that is, when you, when you phrase, "What am I, what would I be stepping into?", that, that is one thing.
Thank you for that. That's good to know.
Mine is probably a blend of the two, the time commitment and that this is kind of a family affair because of how public our meetings are. I mean, my kids have a lot of questions for me when I get home. They have questions about things they hear at school, so it's all that communication and perception piece. I've had my kids say, "Why did the school board do this?" Well, it really wasn't something that was our decision. But then you get a really neat lens through the fact that kids are paying attention even to what's going on at this level. So, knowing that you have kids in the district too, that's something that I've learned is it's more of a, a family affair than I expected. Yeah.
I would say for me that, I guess there's a few different ones, but one that I'm thinking of right now is the, the amount of reading and just studying of, of the information. When, when I started the school board, I didn't use teeters and I didn't have gray hairs. But, um, but I, I do find myself reading a lot more at, at night and just trying to keep up with, with what's out there and making... and making sure that I'm up to speed on things. And still, at times, I feel like I'm running to catch up. So that's probably the main one that surprised me.
And I, yeah, and I don't even think that goes away because it seems like you just kind of think you have something figured out and then it changes or something new comes up. So there's always surprises and, yeah. And I, yeah, the tough, I've had to grow a tougher skin because I had a hard time sometimes with some of the decisions I made that didn't go with the board. And the tough skin, yeah, you do have to grow a little bit of a tough skin. And I actually found it easier when my kids graduated to be on the board than when they were in school. Yeah.
I could see that.
Anyway, yeah. Any other questions?
Do I have time for one more? I know I'm the only thing standing between you guys. But I was curious, you know, just thinking about my own personal skills and what skills you bring to the board. Would you call out or call up any skills that you have that have been really important or that you've leaned into as you've stepped into this role? That you're like, "I'm so glad I am this kind of person" or that this is my, you know, where I lean to? I don't know if that question makes sense.
I can speak to that. My entire career has been around children, youth, families, education and community. And so not even as much as I felt well-equipped to do this because there are times when you're still at a lack and you have to learn all the time. But when we're making the tough decisions we make, even though maybe if I question myself for even a minute, I quickly can fall back on the fact that this is what I've done my whole career. And I know deep down inside that I always have the best interest of this community and kids and education and families at heart. So for me, I'm finding myself falling back on that foundation and really trusting that and not knowing coming into it that what a comfort maybe that would be to me sometimes to be able to know that I have that to stand on, you know?
I think for me, I'm open-minded. I'm not black and white. I'm the shades of gray. So I don't make a decision without some research and some thought. And some of the decisions, you know, you don't know if you're necessarily making the right decision at times. So you have to rely on the experts. And that's our staff and, you know, articles and stuff. So I think just being able to study and not be set in one direction without first studying and listening, so.
Yeah, I think I heard somewhere you need to have, what, 60% of the information to be able to make a good decision?
Any other thoughts, questions? Let's see, okay, this is our fourth interview. So did I tell you the process already or not? That we have, I did not.
Okay, I think you said we have one more next week, right?
Yes.
Let me make a decision.
We don't know what you said.
And then it'll be 30 days before the person that we select is appointed and they'll start on the December 6th meeting. And then I, did I, I say already that we've had a bunch of good applicants? And whoever gets selected, we hope they'll run again next fall. And whoever doesn't get selected, we hope they're going to consider running next fall because we'll have four positions up next fall, so.
You did say that and that's wonderful to hear, that people are engaging.
Yeah, 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 it is. It was, it was good. It's been good. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Oh, are you entertaining a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
So move.
I will second. Oh, we have an item?
Oh, we have an item?
Well, we're going to, the four action has to be tabled until, yeah. So that, yes, the four action, we'll table that until our next Wednesday meeting. And so we have a motion to adjourn from Director Boiles and a second from Director Shogren. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed, same side motion carries. What's that?
Who approved number?
Boiles and Haglund.